We will now call the meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to order. It is, we are here at the administration building, it's Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, 6:30 PM. We welcome everyone that's here tonight, and let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are going to start tonight with some folks from Connersville High School. I don't know if Randy is gonna introduce?
I am not going to do the speaking.
Okay.
But I appreciate the opportunity to showcase a new club that we have at CHS. And for years, kids have been involved in video gaming. And they say, hey, I wanna, I want a career, and I wanna play games for a living and make money. And I just laugh at them and say, there's, there's no such thing. Get a, you know, have a, have an idea about what you're going to do. But I was so wrong. Because now, there's college scholarships for that sort of thing, gaming. And there's a, an esports movement around the country, not only in high schools but colleges. And we have a club at the high school for the first time, and these kids are here to talk to you. Their sponsor, Brian Mitchell, will introduce the kids and talk to you a little bit about our new club. So thanks for having us.
I am privileged of having some really great kids, so I'm gonna let them actually take the wheel. I had very little to do with this, just kinda coordinated it. They did a great job of presenting this and getting this all together, so really, the hand goes to them. So we're gonna start with the video, and then they have some, a slideshow that they wanna present to you. And should be about, maybe about 10, 11 minutes or something.
My name is Brian Mitchell, I am a social studies teacher here at Connersville High School, and I am the sponsor of the esports club. Earlier this year, I was approached by Mr. Judd in starting this esports club after some students had approached him about the opportunity in this growing field that both can talk about gaming and about education and technology and any opportunities that that can afford to students. And so, I kinda ran with the, with the program, and with some help from some other people in the community, we were able to get it started. And we've got 20 kids now on the roster who very much enjoy the opportunity to showcase skills that maybe, you know, like athletes have a chance to do it on a ball field, or on a court. They get a chance to showcase their skills on a computer and, and, you know, gaming with other high schoolers in the nation. So I'm very excited to see this grow. I've had many students approach me about it, about joining the club next year. And I think it's gonna be a great thing for our community, and a great thing for students to, once again, showcase skills and talent that they may not have an opportunity to show other places. So very excited to see what happens with the future of Connersville Esports Club.
So unlike my fellow players, I joined the esports club to help expose me to the management of esports. Esports is so big, there's different games, and each game has totally different preparations. And with the esports club, it's allowing me to be exposed to that, and help prepare me for the dream of owning an esports organization and having players play under my organization name and bring up championships.
I joined the esports team for a safe competitive gaming environment and to play with people from my school.
The esports club has given me a fantastic opportunity to play with my friends against other communities.
Hello, we're the CHS Esports Club. I'm Jordan Abraham.
I'm Halay Valu Patterson.
My name is Justin Moore.
And I'm Tristan Lanhart.
The first question that we get asked is, what exactly is esports? Esports is one of the largest growing sports in the world, and has become so national that it gets put on American television like ESPN.
Esports involves multiple-player competitions online. And that basically means that many people will play online together, whether that be close by or across the country, and will compete against each other.
Our members play on HSCL, the High School Esports League. It's a nationwide league where we get to face off against other high schools.
Some of the games that we offer right now are Overwatch, Rainbow Six Siege, and Hearthstone. Overwatch is a team-based multiplayer first-person shooter which assigns players into two teams of six. Each player on a team gets to pick from a roster of 31 characters, each one having a different skill set, weapon types, and as far as you can imagine. Tom Clancy's Rainbow Six Siege is a first-person shooter game in which players utilize many different operators based on real-life counterterrorism units. Different operators have different races, ethnicities, weapons, and gadgets.
Hearthstone is a turn-based collectible card game where two players are put against each other in a one-on-one battle. There are nine different classes. Each of the classes has their own special sets of cards, abilities, unique activations they can do.
The second question we get asked a lot is, why do esports? Well, we're one of 22 high schools in Indiana that have an esports team. Some other ones include Carmel, Bloomington, Noblesville, and East Noble.
Esports is one of the fastest-growing industries with jobs including streaming online, YouTube, programming and production, and managing the video games.
Career opportunities in esports range anywhere from the entertainment industry to technology and manufacturing. Some example esports occupations are event staff, creative marketing, creative marketing strategists, motion designers, social media managers, QA analysts, heads of studios, server techs, professional gaming, streaming, and YouTube.
Esports has grown to a state of worldwide viewership. 99.6 million people watched the League of Legends Mid-Season Invitational, and close to the 103.4 million that watched this year's Super Bowl.
Some colleges involved in esports that offer partial or full ride scholarships are Indiana Institute of Technology in Fort Wayne, Indiana, Trine University in Fort Wayne, Indiana, Mount St. Joseph University in Cincinnati, Ohio, Cincinnati Christian University in Cincinnati, Ohio, and the Miami University in Oxford, Ohio, in which their Overwatch team in 2017 won the National Association of Collegiate Esports.
The esports club is important to CHS as it helps us create team building. As in, it teaches us to act as a team and help each other out when we need it.
Furthermore, on the topic of team building, the characteristics of a successful esports team are identified through discussion on the variety of team resources and composition. The conceptualization of team cohesion in different dimensions and the functions of communication and social support in esports not only requires teamwork and communication, but can also serve as an opportunity for players to develop a variety of life skills.
Coordination and communication are two very important skills, are two very important skills to have on an esports team. For example, we have to be synchronized in our attacks. In the game we play Overwatch, we only have really a couple seconds to plan our tactics and carry it out. We make sure to talk while we do this and to call out important stuff, like where to focus on and what's going to happen.
Esports is also connected to the STEM program. STEM majors connect to esports on a deeper level than just an interest in computer science. Succeeding in esports can be seen as solving a science or a math problem.
The esports club creates a safe and fun environment for not only us to have fun in, but to be safer than maybe other physical sports out there.
Our club has the chance to be a leader in high school esports because we are the only school in the east-central region that has an esports club.
Now we will tell you what esports means to us personally. So hello again, my name is Jordan Abraham, and I am part of the Overwatch team for CHS's esports team. Coming in as a freshman, high school is pretty scary, thinking about how there's so many other kids who are older than me, or how pretty much everyone here, I don't really know. But coming into the esports league has really helped me transition into high school and to feel comfortable. First off, it has allowed me to meet people who share the same interests as me, whether it's the online game Overwatch, or any other games that I enjoy. It has also helped me meet people who I wouldn't have otherwise. Everyone here I knew of but weren't as close to as I am now. And I think esports has all brought us closer together. So I'm very grateful to be part of this team and how it has helped me come into high school.
Hello, my name is Justin Moore, I'm a sophomore at the high school. Esports has given me the opportunity to find people with like-minded interests, people that didn't care for physical sports, but rather found it more fun to stay inside and play computer games. I've played video games for as long as I can remember and have enjoyed every adventure with them. Overwatch was just the first game that I really got into. I quickly watched and read all of the guides, and I did in-game exercises to get better at it. Esports is different from playing video games casually. Once you get good at it, you can try to offer it what you have to a team. For me, I support and I flex. I can heal the team when they need it, or I can switch to a different role if it's needed. This club is becoming a new chapter in my life, whether it's just for fun or something that can take me foreign life. I will not forget my club or my friends that got me there.
Hello, I'm Halay Valu Patterson. And I joined the team because I heard from a couple of girls that they were too afraid to be judged against and, you know, talked bad about just because they wanted to play video games. So I joined to show them that we have a right to be on this team just as much as the guys do. And I wanted to give them the courage to join in the upcoming years. I wanted to be an example for them and to, you know, help them out, help the future female members out, you know? And when you think about, when you think about video games, you usually just think about boys. But in the future, whenever someone says video games, I want them to think about both boys and girls, not just boys.
Hi, my name is Tristan Lanhart, and this is my senior year at CHS. I'll be talking about what esports means to me, and I will apply, and how I will apply what it has taught me to my life going into the world. Being in the esports club has taught me to better coordinate with my team and my peers, just as I would have to at a real job. Following orders from Halay Valu during our matches and helping to set up all the computers and systems at Conexus Gaming Arena, owned by the esports club sponsor, Aaron Chester, has greatly improved my work ethic, my ability to follow orders, and my respect for my superiors. Another benefit of my participation in esports club is the lifelong friendships that I've gained, and a vast improvement to my communication and my ability to socialize. As for what esports means to me, all my life, I've been ostracized for being myself, and have had it drilled into my brain that I would never amount to anything or be good enough for the people around me. This led me to polarize myself from other people, spending all my free time alone, rarely ever letting anyone in emotionally. That's when I started playing video games. My Aunt Glenda got me a PlayStation 2 for my birthday one year, and everything went up from there. I had something I could enjoy doing regardless of what anyone else said or did, or I could go about my adventures the way I saw it, acting as a small taste of adult life. For me, the CHS Esports Club isn't just a place where we play video games. It's a haven from the society that used to make me despise myself just for being who I am. Thanks to esports and my fellow club members, I don't have to any longer, and I never will again.
That concludes the esports club presentation. Thank you for the opportunity for us to present this club to the community.
I have a question. Young people, what gaming system do you prefer?
How much time do you have?
They all, so we play at Conexus Gaming Arena, which is located on 30th Street, in the old JCPenney Plaza, it's a brand-new place. All four of these members are part of the Overwatch team, and they all play on PC. But the games are offered in any kind of console you can name, Xbox One, PlayStation 4. They even got games for Nintendo Switch. So, I mean, you saw in the video, the Switch being played, they play Overwatch on PC. But we have our Rainbow Six that he had mentioned, they play on PlayStation 4. So it just kinda depends on the game and what your preference is.
And a lot of the games can be played from one console system to another. Like, yeah, so it's all cross-play. You can, it's not limited on what you do or don't have, it's limited on who you know that wants to play.
Yeah, so we all, we all play on computer, but...
I'm not comfortable with keyboard and mouse, so I bring my own controller and I plug it in.
So what's that newest system you mentioned, the Nintendo?
Nintendo Switch?
Now, can I play RBI 3 on confined system?
Can you play RBI 3 on...
From the eighties, from the eighties, that was the bomb.
I don't even think they would do it on...
They, they do, well, they, they have, um... They have been adding a bunch of retro games.
Nintendo has been adding. If you have the Nintendo Switch Online membership, it gives you like this free package that's a bunch of all their old retro arcade games.
Oh, thank you.
We want a lot of Chris tonight.
You guys know what the Palm game is, the old... That's what Chris wants.
No, it's Pac-Man.
Yes.
How many members, did you say, how many belong to the...
I think we have around 20 right now.
Do you have a limit?
No, if anyone wants to join, they can, we're definitely open for new members.
As a geriatric member.
Hey, enroll back in the high school?
I do, I do have a, I know I'm at the Conexus, I brought my personal Super Nintendo in, so kids have been playing Super Nintendo.
And you guys get to pick what games you wanna play?
Yes.
You listen to three, but...
There are, there are plenty of games to come and play. There are probably over 30.
Yeah, there's 10 of them in, Justin mentioned the HSCL. So the HSCL is like, it's actually a structured league that is done on a national scale. They play two games a week except for Fridays. So on Mondays, they have Overwatch and I think it's...
League of Legends.
Is it League of Legends? League of Legends, and they have Dragon Ball Z Fighter, I don't know if you've ever heard of that or not. And then Rainbow Six on Tuesdays. Wednesdays, they have Rocket League.
And Smash.
And Super Smash Brothers. Thursday, they have CS:GO and Hearthstone. And then Friday, they have Fortnite.
And so they play it up at Conexus where Aaron Chester's got this...
Yes, yeah.
And do they, since they're in a league, do they get preferential space? Because Scott just said it's packed in there sometimes.
Yeah, so Conexus, we are, we're in partnership. Aaron Chester used to be a former teacher here at the high school, and he's one of the people who I mentioned in the video who's been very helpful with this. He actually gives us a discounted rate to go into his establishment.
Yeah, we get half-price off anytime we purchase.
And that's, that's throughout the whole year, that's not just during our season. Like, being part of the, the membership here at the high school actually gives them benefits on the outside as well.
How is, how is having this league and a structured way to do it, how's this impacted your other schoolwork? Because as a former teacher, a kid that said they play video games all the time, this kinda translated into, I do video games, but I don't do my schoolwork. How has that, how has that, and you're laughing, but you know exactly what I'm talking about. How, how has that impacted, given this structure and knowing that you have this time to play, how has this impacted your attitude toward the, toward your other schoolwork that probably isn't as much fun and sometimes not as challenging as you might have liked?
Well, this is more like a personal thing for me, so I can't speak for all of them. But my mom said if my grade drops like below where she wants it, that I won't be able to do the esports team anymore. So I work to study and I like make sure I keep it above where she wants.
So it, it provides a motivation, just like stay eligible for any sport, that's great.
Well, the HSCL actually has a key PA requirement to be in.
Oh, really?
It's actually, it's a 3.0.
Wow.
So you have, and they can ask for documentation anytime that's...
That, that's great.
So...
That's great, well, congratulations.
Oh, that's awesome.
Well, beyond that even further, I know that I have asked, me and Jordan have theater class together, we have theater arts together. We help each other with stuff while we're at Conexus sometimes. If we're both there on Mondays after our Overwatch games, we'll sit there, we'll talk about ideas for what the answers could be, we'll work on stuff together. And Mr. Chester's there, and he knows what we're doing, so he's making sure we're not cheating and just getting the answers off the internet.
So you found it has been a real positive thing, not only as a club, but also with, with the rest of your educational experience. That's great.
I would, I would say going to Conexus, it kinda gives us that gaming time that we go home, that we want to go home to and shy for. So it kinda gives us our gaming time, and then we go home and we're like, okay, I gotta get my homework done, I've already played video games today.
Awesome about that, right? You guys have, you guys have just opened my eyes to a whole new world that I know nothing about.
It's awesome.
I may be the only one in the room who's never played a video game.
No. No, no.
We can show you guys, I mean...
Thank, thank you very much. No, I have coordinated.
Wow. Well, that was very exciting. We'll wait a minute for Mr. Collins to get that done.
I don't like those notes. I, I think, you know, these kids are funny, then what did you all do all night? I played video games all night, didn't have a work done. But this is great, it's a motivation, I guess, it's super great.
Okay, we will now move on. I would like to request a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ann, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris, any, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now is the time for patron comments on agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Which includes the approval of minutes from regular business meeting of 41619 and the executive meeting of 41619, personnel report, which includes retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera, approval of the April 2019 claims 53030 to 53266, the approval of the Head Start Priority Guidelines, the appointment to the east-central Indiana School Trust Board, appointment to the Fayette County Library Board, and donations, including a donation of $2,718.63 from the Fayette County Education Fund, a donation of $750 from Whitewater Valley RMC to be used for overdue senior lunch accounts, a donation of $1,100 from Auto Farm at Crooklyn Ford for the CHS baseball program, a donation of $500 from the Connersville Alliance Club for use of CMS student needs, a grant from the Fayette Community Foundation of $28,903 to be used for the CHS TV studio, and a grant from the Fayette Community Foundation of $6,152 to purchase two films for CHS. Wow, lots of donations. So I would like to seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Andy, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign, motion carries. We will now move on to action items. Personnel report, recommendations for employment, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs, board. Presented to you tonight are some recommendations for employment. Certified administrative staff, with certified staff, Michael Todd Winland, as a special education teacher. Certified staff Ashton Fee, elementary teacher at Fayette Central. Hannah Cade, elementary teacher at Prezi. And Jewel Poe, elementary teacher at Fayette Central. Classified staff Josh Bright, summer technology support. Lake Dunaway, summer technology support. And Jason Schwartz, custodian at CHS. Also with Mr. Winland, we also have the recommendation for him to become the head girls' basketball coach at Connersville High School. I want to share a few comments about Mr. Winland. He goes by Todd, so he's a graduate of Purdue, and I did hold that against him. But he has served 15 years as a varsity girls' basketball coach here in Indiana with a total of 26 years coaching kids. He currently serves as the varsity girls' coach at Greencastle Schools. Prior coaching stints include Carmel Ward Central and Hamilton Heights. His overall coaching record, and he texted that to me, and you may wanna tell Todd, because I didn't write it down, I didn't have time. Oh, you have to look it up.
I think it's... It's...
235.
235 and 123.
He has had 21 players go on to play collegiate basketball, many at D1 schools, including Iowa, Michigan, Ball State, Purdue, Butler, Evansville, Noble. He has a 100% graduation rate with his players who played at the varsity level. He's received many coaching awards, including the 3A Coach of the Year, two-time Indiana District 2 Coach of the Year, Conference Coach of the Year, Junior All-Star Coach, and he's coached teams at all levels of the IHSA tournament, up to and including the state finals. He's also been a golf pro, and he currently works with people, I still think, teaching golf lessons. And he did that for a number of years before he moved into education as a full-time teacher. We, of course, do thorough checks on all of our prospective employees, and so we talked to former and current administrators and some former players, and the same message came through with Todd on each one, is passion. Detailed, thorough. Very few, if any, people will ever outwork him. Treats all his players fair, holds players to high standards to represent their schools in a positive way. Has high expectations for his student athletes. He's helped develop many players for D1 success. He's enthusiastic and builds strong relationships with his players. One of his former players who was Miss Basketball said that the impact she, he had on her life to get her to a point where she's a collegiate player at the University of Michigan, said she couldn't, she came to speak to the impact he had on her life. It was very impressive when I talked with her. He's very strong in coaching fundamentals. And one of the biggest things to me, and something that I know Mr. Duncan and Mr. Judd were looking for, is building the youth program. And everywhere he's been, he's built the youth program from the, from the ground up at the elementary level. So that was a strong message that came through. Todd's been married over 25 years to his wife Stacy and has three children, Kennedy, 24, Sidney, 22, and Carston, 18, who've all played college sports as well. And Carston is going to play basketball, just graduated, is graduating this year. So I present these folks to you for approval. We also have summer school recommendations. If you'll look at Attachment A, that's included. Those are listed in for elementary. We're gonna be offering the third grade IREES summer school again for, for our kids. And Beth Fuller and Jessica Miller will be teaching, and then Yvonne Duncan will be serving as an education assistant. For high school, we have the following teachers who will be teaching, and our dates are June 3rd through June 27th. Kelly House, PE in health. Stephen Beckman, English Language Arts. Audrey Arvi, English Language Arts. Jeff Cooley, PE in health. Amanda Combs, math. Jeremy Born, government, geography and history. Chad House, PE in health. Brian Munchel, PE. Brian Mitchell, econ or history. Eric Myers, math. Crystal Phelps, math. Joy Davis, basic skills. Paula Schaus, English. Tanya Stork, English. Gag Navi, ag. Brian Todd, econ, US history, government. We also have summer band where Levi Thompson and Adam Dolphy will be working with the students again. And we also have Jamie Hand serving as a guidance counselor for summer school. And then for the career center, we have one teacher, Beth Shank. And finally, for cosmetology, Dora Jones and her educational assistant, Kristy Shepherd. So those are individuals I present to you for consideration for hiring.
Thank you.
High school summer school is going to be at the middle school?
Yes.
Even PE?
Even PE?
Even PE, okay.
With the ongoing construction...
Well, no, it's not gone on yet.
It's going to happen.
Shane.
It's happening, so, so, yeah, we just didn't wanna risk.
It's gonna be dry for the next...
Well, it's just the facilities there are so much more limited because of no outdoor space and not having the swimming pool, that was my, that was my question, so.
We've done that before.
Yeah. We use, we use the.
Clay pool.
Clay pool and.
And the teachers are adaptable. They're, they're gonna plan for that and work with Mr. Judd and Ms. Denham to make sure it goes off.
All right, thank you for that. I would like to, uh, have a motion to, um, accept the personnel report. Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? We're certainly excited to welcome you to the C H S and the basketball program. We're excited to have you. Thank you.
Have you ever?
Okay.
I'm gonna make a statement because I gotta go to track.
Oh, okay.
We're excited with the new pathway that ladies Spartans are taking. I think we all did our diligence and looking and scouring and talking to people that was not on his reference sheet. Between myself and Coach Brown, we know quite a few people in the coaching world, so we can find our back ways in the people that don't know that we're looking through the back doors. So, uh, we're excited and I'm excited to have Todd here. I got a little box with trinkets. I don't know if they'll fit, but we're gonna at least get him in his first red. I hope it's big enough. Hopefully the one in here for your wife will work because, uh, we'll get them all in red and white. But, uh, you get done with the meeting, you wanna come watch the end of the track section, we're gonna go home with the ladies Spartans. We're bringing home the trophy tonight. But, uh, excited about where I think ladies Spartan basketball can go back to as it was in the nineties with, uh, April and packing up, packing ball with, uh, fans that we used to. So, I'm excited to have him aboard. I appreciate you coming down today. He's already come over and saw the lay of the land of the track and had a few bites to eat from Charvel. I appreciate all the help that you guys give us and getting the people in place that we need to be successful with that program. So, I'll turn around, I'll go back to track. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
Have you ever coached in the, have you ever coached in the bowl?
Yes, I, we played for Anderson Highland. We played our section in oh eight, oh seven or oh eight in the bowl. We got beat too by Connersville.
Is there anything you'd like to share with us tonight? You're, if you'd wish to.
You know, I was just looking for a, for a place to, to call home and, uh, a passionate place for basketball because I'm a very passionate person. And, uh, my son, before I transferred him to B S B at Carmel, was at Pendleton Heights. So, I watched firsthand, uh, how passionate Spartans, you know, Spartans were at the, uh, bowl when Pendleton came into town to play. And, uh, the pre-game festivities, being from Anderson, uh, that's what the Wig Wall was all about, you know, is that the pre-game festivities and all of the hoopla that went around with it. So, uh, and I'd known Michael Thompson through my coaching years and, uh, you know, saw that, uh, you know, he had went to the baseball side and kind of gave up the basketball. So, uh, I immediately put a call into Brent and seen my resume and I'm really happy to be here because, you know, I'm kind of a blue collar type guy that grew up in the country and roll up your sleeves and go to work and that's what I want my kids to do. So, we may not win every game, but we're gonna play hard. So, I'm really happy to be here.
It's great to hear. Thank you. We're glad to have you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll now move on to the approval of the twenty twenty Teacher of the Year. Ms. Corzaro.
Thank you, Board President and Board. Um, as you know, each year Indiana Department of Ed recognizes an outstanding teacher across the state and then one is chosen to represent all the Indiana teachers. Each school district is allowed to choose up to two teachers, one primary and one secondary teacher. So after receiving and reviewing the nominations, the Teacher of the Year Committee has selected two teachers for Fayette County Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty. The Teacher of the Year Committee is happy to recognize for the primary teacher of the year, Ms. Julie Judd. Uh, Julie is a fifth grade teacher at Frazee Elementary. She started her career in two thousand and one where she taught fifth grade at Orange Elementary. In two thousand and two, she moved to Grandview Elementary and taught fourth grade and then moved to her current home at Frazee in two thousand and four where she has taught both third grade and fifth grade. Julie received her Bachelor of Science of Education at Indiana University East, her Master's in Administration from Ball State University. While Julie's been here at Fayette County, she's taken on many different leadership-type roles and also served on very many F C S C committees. It was evident in the committee that Mrs. Judd puts her students first and one thing that the committee wanted to recognize her for was something that she put in her application about her feelings for kids. And she states, "I am present in their lives, not just for the school year, but for the years to come. It is important to me that they know that I'm, that they aren't just my kids for the school year, but they are my kids forever." So the committee really honed in on that and felt like, you know, anyone who knows Julie knows that she works endless hours. You can go by Frazee Monday through Sunday and her Jeep is sitting there no matter what time. So it's my honor to recognize Ms. Julie Judd as the twenty twenty F C S C Primary Teacher of the Year. It was an honor, Mr. Collins and I get a go and surprise them and, um, we definitely surprised her. Of course, Mr. Collins had to play a little trick on her and go in first and pretend he was going to see a student.
I had good intentions.
I wish we would've had a picture of your face because it was priceless. And so, we really enjoy this part of our job, so you made our day yesterday.
Well, you made mine.
So, thank you very much. I do appreciate it. It is an honor.
Thank you.
The Teacher of the Year Committee selected for the Secondary Teacher of the Year, Mr. Brian Todd. Mr. Todd currently is teaching social studies at Connersville High School. He started his teaching career at C H S in nineteen ninety, teaching U S history and economics. Um, he did leave C H S for about nine years and served as Assistant Principal for a neighboring district, but returned to C H S in two thousand and fifteen and is currently teaching A P U S history for college credit as well as economics. Um, in addition to teaching, he serves as the Department Head for Social Studies and is also part of the Early College High School Faculty Committee. Mr. Todd received his Bachelor of Science in Social Studies education from Purdue, so we have house divided, U Purdue. Uh, he also received his Master's in Administration from the University of Miami of Ohio and is currently enrolled in the Ph D program for organizational leadership at Indiana Westland, so congratulations on that. In reading through his application, the committee really felt like he, his genuine love for students came through in his application. And he talks many times throughout his application about his desire for his current students and not only for them as young adults, but as they graduate and as they go out and become citizens of, uh, our community. He talks about, "I emphasize to my students that each one of them has a story that is unique to them and one that is worth telling and also hearing. I remind them that just because they're young doesn't mean that they do not impact history in some small way because the choices they make have an impact on the life stories of others." It is my honor to recognize Mr. Brian Todd as the F C S C Secondary Teacher of the Year. He was not as jumpy when we came to see him.
Thank you very much. Very, very appreciative.
Very. And so, on behalf of the Teacher of the Year Committee, I bring to you tonight for your recommendation for the twenty twenty Teacher of the Year, Julie Judd, Primary Teacher of the Year for F C S C, and Brian Todd Secondary Teacher of the Year. Thank you. Congratulations to you both.
We are so lucky.
We are.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, excuse me, the twenty twenty Teacher of the Year.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Yes, you may.
And after the program, if you all like to stay, we will have a, a, a small, uh, time of refreshments and a social here to congratulate both of you. And then I know that you have family here as well and then also to welcome Todd to our community and to the program. So, if you could stay, that would be great. You're welcome to do so because I think there's no greater honor than to be recognized by your peers and, and by those who look at the great work you do with kids. That's what it's all about, so. Best part of my job is getting to go. I will tell you with Mr. Todd that he got out on social media, as things do, and some of his former students were posting, "Go."
Go.
You know, greatest of all time. And so I don't know if you see those or not, but that speaks volumes.
I thought that was Game of Thrones.
I don't know. Well, that's the kids.
All right, we'll now move on to the request for approval of Connersville High School's security gate, Ms. Callum Todd.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. As the board's aware, part of the high school security project includes a gate on the north side of the courtyard. We only received two bids for the gate. The low bid being Bron's Gutsweiler at eighty-seven thousand dollars. This does include the, um, egress from that area. When that becomes enclosed, it is considered an occupied space. So you have to have so many exits out of that based on the square footage. They say how many people can be in that area. Not that that many people would ever be in that area, but it's based on how many it could hold and the exits. That is why the cost is higher than what you would think for a normal, um, gate type enclosure. Those electronic mechanisms that allow for, uh, the egress but prohibit ingress to the property.
The, 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 the original contractor talked to us about that when we were, when we were talking about that.
Capacity of the courtyard.
The capacity of the courtyard, yeah. He mentioned that, so, he said it was gonna be a little bit more expensive to do it that way. But, you, as, as, I think he said, we'd never have that many people in that area, but.
You have to plan for it.
You have to plan for it, so.
The hardware was just so expensive. I mean, they had to put in, I think, five or six of the different mechanisms.
Four releases.
On top of brick and all the other stuff that's going with it, so. And we don't have a choice. It's mandated.
Well, if you want to enclose the courtyard, which is why the whole project, uh, for security. We, we do wish to proceed with this. The purchase of this will come out of the construction fund, which is where we talked about the gate and the office pieces being paid from as much as possible. They, that is general obligation bond proceeds that are left over. The sale of the orange property. Duke rebates for L E D lighting upgrades have gone into that fund. When you pay off bonds, if there are accumulated interest over a period of time, once those bonds are settled, that money comes back to the corporation. It goes in there also. So, that's where this will be paid from.
Those two bids were quite different too, weren't they? That was surprising. What's, why was there such disparities?
There's really no difference. I mean, Bron's Gutsweiler is mobilized here anyhow, working on the field house. So, you know, they don't have to re-mobilize, redeploy a group or anything like that. It's they're here, they can do that while they're here. So, I would say that there's some economy of scale, having staff already on site to.
Well, in familiar.
To the tune of, you know, thirty or forty thousand dollars. I'm not sure it's that. But, um, the bids were reviewed by Fanny and Howie to make sure that they were like bids.
Okay, good.
And the trade tariffs. I know that, that trade tariffs with China has pushed steel costs up. So, our timing with this project was good with the field house. We got ahead of some of that. And the labor costs are going up, so I think our timing was really good, would save you a significant.
We're locked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, the economy's growing. That's good. That's bad for us when they're going to work for people who are having to pay higher wages, which are driving costs up.
Well, thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to request the approval of the high school's security gate.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Activity bus purchase. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Uh, in your information, we have, uh, a memo from Mr. Drew. He, he's welcome to come on up and talk a little bit about how these activity buses, the fourteen-passenger ones. And, uh, if you would look at, when Jamie prepares all the budget documents, there's a two thousand and eight activity bus that was slated to be replaced in nineteen. And then Daryl came to us and Captain and begged us for another one of these buses. I mean, he was relentless because we can't keep them in and they're being used, which is a, a good thing. It's a cost savings. And, you know, we talk about the, the kids we're transporting across county and things too. But Daryl, would you like to talk a little bit about what?
We're using them more and more every day. Like, all three of them are out tonight, so if we had one broke down, we'd really be in a spot tonight. But, I mean, we're using them more and more. Trent is pushing his coaches to use them. We got C M S baseball out tonight, C M S softball out tonight, C M S golf. We figured out, Scott and I talked about, there's fourteen different teams that are using these buses every night. You know, as much as possible. There's days we had to borrow the W C C vehicle if we, if possible, to have enough little buses going out because a lot of times we can't get drivers back early enough to get them where they need to be. So a lot of times we'll use the bus, the smaller buses. Like Saturday, Mr. Liggett's got, uh, state kids going to Terre Haute. We're gonna take two buses. I figured it saved us about a hundred and fifty-six dollars just to send two buses versus a regular driver and a big bus. So, they are getting used. We're pushing more and more to use them. We're asking coaches, when they sign up, to drive them, you know, more and more to get trained on them. So we are using them quite a bit.
We received, through the bidding, there were two different buses that Daryl had, they brought them in. And this bus is very similar to the one that's already painted with the, the logos, the last Spartan, little Spartan Express. They're the same type of bus, same size. So, um, we're hoping that we can find a creative way to let our students, you wanna talk a little bit about that with the career center?
I was hoping we have, we'd get a price back tonight, but we've talked about letting them design the, um, process to put it on, you know, to, to, um, take the life, make it, you know, not permanent and not paint it. And we'd have to have a company actually come and put that on for us. But when we get ready to resell it or trade it in, we can take it off and it wouldn't be permanent paint on it. So, we're trying to get the vocational kids in to design the wrap for it.
They designed a wrap for Centerville's fire truck.
Fire, uh, trailer.
Fire trailer.
Yeah.
And so that, that's.
And they were very excited about doing that.
So we're trying to include the kids in that once the buses arrive.
Daryl, do they have seat belts?
Yes. Yes. They have individual seats, just like.
I thought the small ones did. That's good.
They have the captain's chairs in them. Um, we're gonna go with leather. You know, we've decided maybe it's a little more durable for us, you know, with the kids that are using them, like baseball and softball, they're getting on after sliding and being very dirty and. You know, so, um, we just would like to add a couple to our fleet.
They're a lot more comfortable for the kids than riding on those huge buses.
They, they are nice unless you're on the Spartan Express, you know.
Well, there's only a few times you get to ride on the Spartan Express, but, no.
Well, I'm sure the new basketball coach is gonna push for us to get another one of those too, so.
How often is this Spartan Express used?
For the most part, it goes out probably four out of the six days that we send a week. We tried to get different teams on it. You know, we've sent, uh, different field trips on it. Um, we've sent the academic team on it. I don't think there's very many teams that have not used it or clubs. Like, I think Julie's, did you guys just use the Express to go to?
We're leaving, uh, Thursday.
Yes, so they're using Express to go to the State House, so it'll be setting up there.
I want to commend you. You've done a really good job of getting the Express out because the Express, in the old days, was something that, oh my, if you were in middle school or in elementary school, you just, that was sacred ground and it could sit and you could be on a bus that was fifteen years old. But to have it out in the community like that and have the younger kids on it, this is, this is great. Makes discipline on the school bus, on the Spartan Express, is a whole lot easier to handle than on a regular bus because they're so proud of it.
It is. A lot of people are really proud to get to ride that bus. In fact, we are putting it in the parade this coming weekend, the Honor Force Day Parade. And we have invited any member of the school that served may ride that bus. So, um, they are talking. I don't know what we're gonna do yet, but we are talking since we can play outdoor music on it through the outdoor speakers. We may lead the parade, but we're not sure yet. So we'll see.
Little Minnesota Rouser coming out?
We have every military song and it will just replay. We've got, you know, a couple of different versions of each one of them. So, uh, Charlie Cox has been very helpful doing that and will be driving. He has volunteered his time to drive the bus Saturday because it means that much to him.
Thank you, Daryl.
Yes.
Thank you, Daryl.
Okay, I'd like to seek a motion to approve the activity bus purchase.
Madam President, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Chris. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Approval of the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school calendar, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. President and Board. Last month, you'll recall, I, uh, discussed the calendar and shared the draft for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Calendar.
Lots of twenties.
And, uh, I highlighted that, so, uh. So just a couple of highlights from that. The first student day will be August 5th with teachers returning August 3rd and 4th. We are going to have the teacher professional day, conference day again October 12th, and then fall break will be the last full week of October. November, we are doing the, we are scheduling the two-day Thanksgiving, but we really wanted the committee, wanted to wait and see how, if you recall, I shared that, see how this three-day Thanksgiving works. Break works this year. And then it's easier to change it than to take it away. So that was a recommendation from the committee. We will have a full two-week winter break. And something different in this calendar that came from the committee work was that the fourth, which is the Monday after New Year's, will be a teacher professional day workday. So the students won't return until Tuesday. So that's a change from what we've been doing in past years. And then we've also built in snow makeup days on February 15th and April 5th, which coincides with the Good Friday three-day weekend. So that could possibly be a four-day weekend if we don't need those. And then we're also identifying makeup days for snow days in the last week of May. So we're putting them in the calendar to help with communication and for planning for parents. Graduation then would be June 6th for CHS. And any questions or comments if you have any before you approve?
A lot of the parents that I talked to liked putting in the possible makeup snow days there at the end because they had vacation plans and the like and they knew not to schedule them so early in case we did have snow days. If you planned it so far ahead, when we have a year like we have this year, it's a little bit more difficult. So they were very thankful about that, putting them, actually building them in at the end. So it gave them a better idea of what was going on.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mark. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll go on to discussion items. School board policy, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Ms. President. If you recall, something that we started last year was going through, some of our policies just needed some minor changes as Indiana code or different laws or requirements change, we update those. So I'm going to go through the changes in each of these policies briefly. The first is policy 1.04, which deals with drug, alcohol, tobacco, firearm, and free safe schools. And we are just adding language dealing with e-cigarettes, vaping or drooling devices or nicotine products. Those are becoming quite popular with children and students, unfortunately. Policy 3.07, dealing with tobacco-free schools and grounds. Again, we added the e-cigarettes, vaping, drooling devices. Policy 3.29, we had a very short and non-detailed reimbursement policy in place for staff training or staff travel. So Janey has provided some language that really helps clean up and provides clearer expectations for that with regards to reimbursements and what expenses are unauthorized and just more guidance for us to follow as we deal with travel and reimbursement for employees. So do you want to have any questions on that? I didn't read the whole thing, but really does talk about the importance of us making sure that there's adequate documentation, you have itemized receipts and just accountability piece with state board accounts.
Scott, I think that's good that we expanded on that because a lot of teachers had no clue when they were getting ready to take a conference or, you know, whatever, that all these details were in there. So I think that's good because they can look at that ahead of the time and take care of it.
We still have struggles at times with people after, because Janey's very good about, be sure you bring these back, but, you know, people forget or they lose them. So she works with those folks. The next is policy 5.06, and the state legislature made some changes with regards to kindergarten age requirements and early entrance. So Kim and I thought that we ought to put that language in just to reflect the age changes. So for effective for this coming school year, parents can apply for early entrance if their children turn five on or before September 1st. So that actually pushes that date a month later. And if they do meet that requirement and we approve their enrollment, then we do get funding because the state was not providing any tuition support for students if we allowed them after their cutoff, the cutoff date of August 1st. So this is a change where the state has, I think this is a good change because we were turning away kids who turned five literally the day before. And then in 2020, they've moved that date to October 1st where parents can apply for early entrants. So you have to have the policy and language in place to be able to do this. And so we just wanted to make sure we included that. One other change is primetime was still listed in that policy in section three and that's gone away. So we changed that language to student-teacher ratio. Policy 5.20, if you will flip back in that to page three, some new language that has been provided to schools just to identify what it means if you have an incapacity to attend school. So it provides language for us and that we can use with parents if a child is missing school due to an illness or some other health reason and what is required for parents to provide as far as a certificate that attests to their reasons for their absences. So it still gives the schools, you know, it's up to the principals to determine whether the absence is excused, but it really gives us more guidance to use with parents to get that language and that notification from the medical person. So that is that change. Policy 5.26, under student discipline, again, we added on page two of that in section seven, e-cigarette devices, vaping or drooling. So that is the change in that. And then under the extracurricular code for CHS and CMS, policy 5.32, the self-reporting piece had already been removed from the student handbooks, code of conduct. So we just needed to clean up this policy and remove that self-report clause as well. So we are striking that from page two and page three of that policy. I'm almost done. Policy 5.61, homeless students, enrollment rights and services. McKinney-Vento is legislation that really guides us on, you know, making sure that we are providing education and transportation services to kids. So there were a couple of changes in their language that we wanted to include under item one, when it talks about economic hardship or loss of housing or similar reasons, we were, that's the language that we had to add. And then also definition of an unaccompanied youth, which is a homeless student who is not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian. So that language was needed. And then on the second page of the policy, there was just some cleaning up of the language with transportation. So for example, now, I know Daryl does a great job with working with other districts where, right now, we are transporting a student, picking a student up in Arlington over in Western Rush County, and we have students that we will transport to Wayne County, Franklin County. And it gives guidance because some partner schools sometimes don't want to help share that cost or provide service with us. So the state has provided some more guidance with language that we've included in the policy with the transportation pieces and where it's shared equally between the two school corporations. And then also there's some language changes with just notifications and information about the locations frequented by homeless students, their parents or guardians and unaccompanied youth. So policy 7.22, tobacco-free schools, guess what? E-cigarettes, vaping or drooling devices are included in that to go along with cigarettes, pipes, snuff, and other materials or substances. And then the last one, and this is a new policy that I'm presenting to you, and we met and talked about this policy with the policy committee. And what prompted this for us was we had a request from a high school life skills teacher about bringing a therapy dog into the classroom and having that dog become part of the program. And working with Megan Gilman, our special ed director, and Ms. Crisaro, we worked on some language that we received through, had our attorney look at it and draft it, really to make sure that we follow all of these guidelines when we bring an animal into the school that could be considered a therapy animal, making sure it has all of its vaccinations, that we make sure that there's proof of liability insurance, and then also making sure there's a communication piece for the other, for the parents so they know if there's an allergy or some reason why the dog shouldn't be in there, we have policy to guide the principal and the teacher. So the animal will, you know, we want to reduce any risk of injury or any health reasons with the animal. So this policy guides us on that.
Scott, does this apply to kids that would bring therapy dogs in? Is that a different policy?
Well, yeah, any animals in school. And we've had, I don't know, a couple of different situations in the past few years where we've had requests for therapy dogs to be.
Same guidelines then, whether the school's bringing the animal in or.
They will have, and we really didn't have any policy, so this gives us policy to fall back on with parents because we've had a couple of requests that we weren't quite for sure that this animal, because there are only two animals that meet the therapy animal list. One is the dog and the other one is, anyone don't?
Horse.
A horse.
Yep.
A little horse.
Yep.
So we haven't had that request yet, but we have.
No tarantulas?
No tarantulas or not.
Sorry, Chris. Sorry, Chris. I know, really close-minded.
So anyway, this is just language that helps us. We needed this in here. So, and that is it. So any questions? We will review this again next month and present it to you for approval.
As I recall, when we were talking about the animals, this did not apply to the snake in the.
Aquarium?
The aquarium.
Terrarium, no.
No.
Or the shell, the turtle in the aquarium.
Or the hamster.
The beta fish.
Or the hamster on the wheel.
Yeah, this really deals more with service animals.
Or the pupa, for the butterflies that are going to emerge.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next discussion item is safety, the Alice training. Mr. Collins? Mr. Reddick?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Liggitt is fresh from his travels to Indy for the school safety conference. Yeah, they coordinate their.
Yeah. We call each other.
Yeah, so it seems like it.
So Trent is our school safety specialist for the district and does a really nice job with leading that and leading our district committee. And we want to talk a little bit about Alice. I've shared some information with you about that, but with the changes in policy and requirements for schools with active shooter training, that's become the way of life now in our schools. So this ties in nicely with preparing our staff and students for that.
And the discussion I'd like to begin with tonight is up front here is the Alice Training Institute. I recently went to a two-day training, hands-on intensive training, which kind of set me back. I had no idea. I thought it was just sit and get, but they had us out there doing the training so we can learn by doing and then come back. Ideally, we want to come back and train our staff and our students in relation to safety protocol. Now, what we have set up here in the past 10 years or so is what is called the SRP. The protocol is from a standard response protocol resulting from a school shooting in Denver, Colorado. And I believe we've had this, Tony, maybe for 10 years or so, but when it comes to lockdown, the four components to what we had to do now is a lockout, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. When it comes down to the lockdown, one of the parts is wait for a responder to open the door. So what we've been teaching and preaching to our kids is when we call for lockdown, that means there's a threat in the building. Don't know what that threat is unless we tell you over the PA or some other mode, but you stay put in your classroom, turn off the lights, pull down the blinds, and things of that nature. Well, the Alice training is similar to this, but there are key differences. And the key difference would be the lockout. If you look on the overhead to the right, the five components are alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. And we do fire drills, we do tornado drills, we do stranger danger at the elementary earthquake drills. But in relation to violent, critical incidents, we don't really talk about that, what it looks like to our teachers and our staff. Every once in a while, Mr. Elliman and I will get a question from our faculty at the beginning of the year, you know, what if? What if this happens? What if this happens? But if we empower our teachers, empower our administrators, even empower our kids to make a decision, a real-time decision, it will save lives. Instead of locking our kids in a room, waiting on that to happen, whatever that is, waiting for the EMT or the police personnel to do their thing, may be too late. For the past eight years, we've used the SRP protocol. We would like to discuss the Alice. The Alice, the ATI learned that over the 15 years, instructor-led only model implementation is very hard. Content may be inconsistently delivered. That means many people have input on what it looks like. In this case, I will be the trainer of the corporation with input from administration and board. I will have the say in what it looks like. Ideally, I want to go to the schools on active shooter drills, which may be mandated by state starting next year, and see what that looks like at each school related to our discussion tonight. Turnover at both instructor and user levels means constant training requirement, very manpower costly. So you have one person kind of leading this initiative. Okay, Tony. Currently, Alice is utilized in about 31% of the 13,000 school districts, 18% of the universities, 26% of law enforcement agencies, and approximately 23 of the hospitals in the United States. What we see up here in this overhead is a blending learning. Ideally, the instructor part on the right, this is what we want to initialize or start the Alice process with. We want experience, we want to be personalized, and we want feedback, conduct demonstrations, and those will be real-time demonstrations with our staff. And especially at the elementary level where the physicality may not be there to be proactive, we want to teach those kids what a threat may look like and to eventually get out of the building. I was at a conference this morning in Indianapolis and I had the privilege to hear the superintendent, ex-superintendent from Sandy Hook, and he said in hindsight, after he went through, here's what happened. I heard from community members over and over and over, it couldn't happen here, it couldn't happen here. And he wanted us to know that it can happen anywhere for any reason. It could be a student, it could be a staff member, it could be a community member, you just don't know who that threat may be. Violent, critical incidents defined. Any event at any location where a person or person attempts to harm innocent people by any means and regardless of motivation. Survival is always based on one of two outcomes. The event is taken back under control by those who can render the event no longer dangerous or people remove themselves from the danger area to get to a safe area. The ex-superintendent from Sandy Hook, he says the day before the incident happened, the elementary principal was talking to his kids, excuse me, talking to her kids, and she said that if we ever have any threat in the building, your job is to get out. Well, unfortunately, that didn't happen because of different scenarios that would ultimately happen. But in relation to communication with our staff, with our kids, with our administration, we want to incorporate cafeteria workers. We want to incorporate janitorial personnel, bus drivers. We want everybody to have input. We want everyone to be on the same page. I was listening to Richmond superintendent today talking about the Dennis shooting. He said we didn't have everyone on board, although the administrators were on board. They knew what to do with their kids, where their kids go. Things that they found out during that whole ordeal is the reunification process, what that looks like, keep the kids separate from the parents, make sure that you have health, mental health people there to kind of facilitate that process. And the more I go to these conferences, the more I learn, the more I can help our corporation. How long do you think it takes for police to enter the building in relation to violent, critical incident? From the sign of danger, from the sign of danger to someone calling 911, according to research, says about two minutes. So whoever hears or sees or has seen a threat in the building, it takes approximately two minutes. How long for dispatch to gain information from the caller? About two more minutes. There's four minutes. How long is police response time? Now, that varies, but in active shooters in the United States, the average is three minutes. minutes. So, there's seven minutes. Officer in the door, another one minute. Contact the threat, another two minutes. So, we're talking approximately 10 minutes by the time the threat is in the building to the time the police officer comes up to the threat. 10 minutes. Now, if you're out Fayette Central, if you're out in elementary, that's, that's pretty far, reaction time may be longer than that. And it's all about saving lives. I've learned things through my training such as the fire station throws away their hoses every so many years. Well, those hoses, if you come in one foot lengths, they'll slip over the, the, the door connectors at the top of the door. So, in essence, that keeps the door shut. Part of the process, Tony, go ahead. Part of the process is we reevaluate our buildings to see what that looks like, safety-wise. Look at the doors, look at, look at things of that nature to, to see how we can improve that. Parts of the process include the alert, initial awareness. Initial awareness is one of the keys. We want to empower our teachers to, one, carry cell phones, two, be able to call 911 if they see a threat. Not necessarily call the office first, but call 911. We were asked last year, I think Mr. Elmas was asked, well, can I call 911 if I see an active shooter? Well, yes, you can. All right? That's time, and time could save lives. PA announcement. Can they be heard? We found out certain areas in our building and the caf- excuse me, in the media center, there are parts of the media center, we couldn't hear the PA. So, we make sure we can hear PA in maybe locker rooms or things like that. You may hear gunfire, screaming loud noises, that's a sensory, sensory input. And believe it or not, if you went through active shooter training where you hear gun shots, and, and Mr. Hunt may validate this, it's numbing, especially in the building. Even though I know it's, it's a drill, when I hear that, it just makes my hair on my arms kind of stand out. Lockdown. Here's the difference between what we're doing now compared to the Alice technique. We, we want to plan on, you know, doing such, such things as barricading the doors, spread out within the room, uh, do not huddle, look for alternative escape routes, uh, do not open the door for anyone, dial 911, let's say to do so. Dennis Middle School Superintendent, Dr. Terrell, he was talking about, they were locked down so good that when the police went to the doors of the buildings, excuse me, the doors of the classrooms, they couldn't get in. It took time to, to move whatever was in front of the door, which was good. And, um, you know, lockdown, here's, here's the major change. One thing I want to do, I wanted to bring up is the Virginia Tech shooting. There was a Professor La Brescure, he was a Holocaust survivor. He held the door shut with his body and yelled at the students to jump out the window. 14 students jumped out the window and all survived. La Brescure is wounded when the gunman shoots through the door. The gunman then enters the door and executes him, and then he shoots the remaining students. So, basically, he knew there was a threat. He tried to get as many people out of the room that he could, and he sacrificed his own life to do that. Now, Alice is a proactive approach that provides additional options, and those additional ops, options, um, can, can look different for different grade levels or different ages. We wouldn't want our, our elementary kids kind of combating a threat. That's not called for, and that would probably lead to other, uh, negative things, but things such as glass can be defeated, such as at Columbine, Sandy Hook, and Hastings and Red Lake, those are actual pictures of those buildings. Inform. When we inform the school as to where the threat is, it may be over the PA system, it may be over phones, it may be over radios, but we want our staff members and our faculty to know that if they're the person informing, it's real-time and it's accurate. Don't use codes, don't redcoat it, don't yellowcoat it, whatever it is. Say the threat is on floor number one around room 216. So, if I know the threat is around me, I will automatically go on a lockdown in that area, and I will do what it takes to secure my room and possibly get out and exit. So, the informed part is, is something that we have to educate our staff and our students about what is proper and what's not proper in relation to informing, um, our students and staff. Counter. Counter is not to specifically go at the threat, but the counter is a strategy about taking back control from the attacker. The decision to get out, evacuate is by far more important than any of the steps we've had here. The evacuation part, process is number one on the list, but the counter may be target, target acquisition, sight, uh, and, and picture and sight alignment, trigger control, stance, grip, and breathing. That part, human nature, if you've ever shot a gun, raise your hand. If you ever shot a gun that first time and hit the target, keep your hand up.
Not a full clap, right?
Well, we saw a video today of the shooter that was at Sandy Hook the night before. He, he filmed his own, own, uh, video, and he knew exactly what he was going to do. And that thing, that's eerie. We need, need to know exactly what we're going to do. Um, Oda phase is observe, orient, decide, and act. These are the phases people go through when they act on a daily basis. The red part, the mental, mental or physical skill necessary to complete it, you can see, and interrupted by certain things. The interruption part is something that is part of the Alice process, which we will train our, our staff to, uh, understand and hopefully educate everyone. Tony?
I think one thing with that, when, when I, I went through this training several years ago, is you want, you don't want everyone huddled in one little corner of the room because most of the shooters know that's what a lockdown is. So, you have kids hiding in different parts of the room. You know, if kids are fleeing, don't run in a straight line, you know, move. Because I don't, Chris would know the statistics, but you take someone who is not trained, what's the percentage of times he's going to hit someone? Even police officers who are taking fire, how many times are they going to be able to? So, you really make it harder for that person to do that. And I heard the Sandy Hook, a, a parent of one of the first graders who was killed speak at a conference, and, uh, she said all the kids were where they were supposed to be. My daughter was right there, huddled in, in a small group. And the gunman do that. So, we're really trying to help let teachers make more informed decisions. If it, if you know the shooting's happening at the other end, and you're out in the hallway going to the restroom, maybe you don't want to go back into that classroom, maybe you want to go down, down to the reunification point or the rally point where we train our staff to take the kids, to get them off campus. So, it's really empowering our staff to make real-time decisions.
And research base, uh, that I learned that in the active shooters in the United States within the last 10 years, those schools that went on a lockdown, the shooter is 50 to 70% accurate in actually shooting a student. And that, those diminish substantially when you have kids going out windows, kids going outdoors, kids doing proactive things to keep themselves safe, and the teachers doing proactive things to keep their kids safe. The Noblesville incident that happened not too long ago, the police chief and assistant police chief were there this morning. They talked about that incident. Actually, Noblesville West Middle School incorporates the Alice, uh, protocol, and their doors are locked down on a daily basis, inside and out, like ours are at the middle school. And, um, the perpetrator, um, actually asked to go to the restroom, um, went to his locker, got two pistols, some ammunition, came back, knocked on the door. A student let him in, and, and then he proceeded by shooting. The teacher recognized that. Actually, the kids were taking a test on their iPad in science class. The, uh, teacher recognized that. He had a squishy basketball that he plays with when he teaches, he tosses up and down. He took that, according to the police chief, and threw as hard as he could at, at the young man with the gun, hit him, kind of disoriented him per se. The teacher was shot, but the teacher did end up tackling him. The threat, in, in addition to that, the kids next door and the teacher next door heard the, the shots. The teacher dialed 911 within the first 15 seconds. The SRO, um, was in the room under a minute. So, I know it's important for the Alice protocol, but SRO in our buildings, which we have a new one this year, this kind of fluctuates from elementary to middle school, is a big plus in relation to a deterrent. Scott's always talked to the, the police personnel in Connersville, park your car in our, our parking lot, be visible, come in our building as much as you can. Because of the Sandy Hook, actually, the Sandy Hook shooter went to a different school to begin with and saw the SRO police car in the parking lot, decided, nope, not going here, I'm going to go to the next school, and that's where he ended up, so. But the evacuation, if you go back to that, Tony, I'm sorry. The, the evacuation part of it, uh, that's what, uh, police personnel want us to do. Uh, they don't want us to combat anyone, but in relation to, uh, you know, our school situ- situation in most in the United States, the evacuation, uh, process where you leave all belongings behind, um, remove, any, any, many potential targets removes need for, for parents to come to the scene. The thing about West, uh, Noblesville West Middle School, the teachers did exactly that. They left everything. They left their cell phones, their key car, the, the keys to their car, things like that. The thing they didn't understand, the reunification process for the kids, the teachers didn't have access to come back in the building, get those cell phones, didn't have access to their cars because they didn't have their car keys. So, simple things like that you don't think of, but that's all part of the process. I'm not going to show you this video, but I'm going to talk about Combine High School. You can look it up on the, the internet, but basically in the library, there was a teacher in the library when the, the shooting happened back in 1999. This was the first well-publicized active shooting, uh, uh, incident in the United States. And she and her kids, she directed her kids to get under the tables, and the shooter was, was out in the hallway reloading, things like that, and, uh, she called the police and asked advice and things like that, and, and they didn't specifically, specifically give her advice, but she kept yelling at students, get under the tables, get under the tables. Well, the shooter came in and, and the rest is history, but if those kids were been proactive or the teacher been proactive, if she knew the shooter was out in the hallway, there were several doors to the library, excuse me, at the cafeteria and, um, I'm sorry, library, and then she could have got out, and they hopefully maybe would have got out. But, um, there are research and guideline mandates supporting Alice, um, which I can give you if you need. I will leave with you a statement this morning made, made by the Indiana School Safety Advanced Training by Dr. Joseph Aradie, ex-supervisor of the District of Sandy Hook. There are no lessons learned about school shootings if nothing changes. I ask you to support us in helping make this new safety initiative, uh, which goes along with our, uh, current safety initiative to, uh, help hopefully save kids' lives.
Tony, did they, any of your training suggest when you would notify parents?
You mean at the reunification process?
Right.
Um, that was under the direction of the emergency personnel.
The local.
The local emergency, there's a commander that takes precedent over school-related decisions, and that, that reunification place, wherever it may be. You don't want to just kind of put all the parents in one room as they come up and get Jimmy. You want them separated, you want some type of identification, you want, uh, to give them certain things they can fill out. This, they said to kind of take up the time. And if I'm a parent picking up my kids and this is all the parents in one room, and everybody gets called out, the more they get called out, the more questions I have. And it's imperative that you have mental health specialists there to kind of help the situation, not necessarily just with the parents and the kids, but with the, the teachers and the people really affected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was going to be my focus. We already expect so much of our teachers. I don't know, I've, I've got so many emotions going through my head as you were talking. Excuse me, um, this isn't new information. I mean, we're, we're aware that you all have been going through this, and, um, you know, what about those teachers who are scared, who don't feel they can do this? I mean, are we, I think we, we have to realize that we're asking a tremendous amount, and I'm not, I, I think, I agree that this is where we are, you know? This is a horrible place and time that we are that we have to do this. Scott just mentioned another school shooting a couple of days ago. And yet, I'm aware that human nature is such that some people are going to freeze, some people are going to, you know, they're just going to panic. And do our teachers, if we're going to be doing this in the schools, is there a safe place they can go where they can tell somebody, I'm terrified of this, I don't want to do this, I'm scared, I don't like it? Any of those things, because we are asking a, a lot of our teachers. And not all of them have the constitution or the emotional stability to, to be able to react in a way that's helpful. You know, I've, I've had conversations with Chris, and there are some who think, and I know this is not tonight's discussion and we're not doing this, but when, when you're in a crisis and if, if somebody had a weapon in the school that was conceal and carry, you know, they might not, they might not be able to act. I think you just said that sometimes even police officers can't hit a target when, in certain situations. And so, and that's on the far end of the spectrum, but then we just have people who might just panic. They're not even in a position of having to protect anybody, they might just panic. So, I'm worried about that. And I want there to be built-in, um, protections for our staff as they're going through trainings and being exposed to this. I don't know where we are with that. And I don't know if they talked about that in the training.
They did mention that, uh, you can give your teachers an opt-out, um, written form, uh, but they would like for them to be part of the process to actually kind of listen and kind of make decisions for themselves, but, um-
This is scary stuff. This is, I mean, you know, I'm paying attention, I'm watching all this, and I'm getting a lump in my throat.
Right.
We are, we are now in the day and age where we've got to, you know, put our teachers through this, and then we've got to teach our kids, our little kids, how to possibly be proactive and defend themselves. I mean, that's just, phew, that's a lot.
And, and, you know, when I was younger and probably most of you in here, that, you know, we left our school building doors open, parents could walk in, have class parties and whatnot, and no questions were asked, but, uh, now's a different, different time and a different mentality in relation to a threat. And the threats are ever-changing. Um, what I learned today, a, a new threat is, is through the air system. You know, uh, you have to make sure you understand where the shut-offs for the air and electrical and things like that, which we've incorporated in our safety plans as of this year, so, you know, things like that, you know, are a big red flag, but if you don't talk about it, you don't discuss it, things will stay the, the same, and ultimately, you know, research says that if you don't change with the times, you know, that the times may change you.
Trent, did they talk about this, the scenario of Marguerite Stone Douglas, where they pulled the fire alarms to get the kids out, and they became ducks in a, in a, in a gallery?
That, that wasn't mentioned today.
They, they didn't discuss that?
It has in the past.
They have that in the past, because that was just so countered. The kids were doing, they were evacuating, and that's just exactly what the shooter wanted.
Right. And, um, the training that I went through, someone asked that very same question, well, what if? You know, here's another what if. They said, don't get in what ifs, but if, if a teacher were to ask you, you know, if we're in lockdown, being proactive, and the fire alarm goes off, what do we do? Well, ultimately, um, that's the empowerment process.
Is it a real fire alarm or is it something else?
Right.
Okay.
And, um, and one, one person said, can you give me a definite answer? Well, without so many words, they said, we would recommend that you stay in the building because the last, um, fire death was, I, I forget they gave me-
1960s.
1960s. Um, you know, so there's a lot of what ifs, but this is more, you know, learning your building, understanding your building, understanding your clientele, understanding your mental health issues, you know, and coming up with groups and processes to kind of combat that. health issues, you know, and coming up with groups and processes to kind of combat that. Unfortunately, the Sandy Hook shooter, or excuse me, the Noblesville shooter had no prior incidents in relation to mental health. He was an outstanding student. So this, he didn't fit the mold for the typical, you know, active shooter, if there is a typical active shooter. But Tony and I are confronted by issues every day. Some of them are somewhat violent, some of them are red-flag-ish, but we meet on an occasional basis, once a week, Mondays usually, and we talk about, you know, our kids and our clientele that potentially could be an issue in the building. So we know where they're at and who they're dealing with. And we teach and preach to our teachers, if you notice anything unusual, if you had a kid coming to class, he's very cheery and outgoing and one day he's depressed and kind of withdrawn, that's a red flag, or vice versa. You know, there's a lot of different red flags, but nowadays is a different time than when you and I grew up.
I've talked to a lot of, several parents here about this and it's scary. And at the same time, you know, I think our teachers need to know that there are options too, and I think that's why we do prepare. I don't think anyone likes it and you hope it never happens, but I remind parents that it's not just schools. Schools seem to get the most attention, but you look at churches, you look at concerts, you look at sport, I mean, look at all the security around the Colts game, you know? The risk is there everywhere and I think it's our job to make sure that we're prepared the best we can be. So maybe that teacher who freezes thinks, okay, we can stack stuff in front of my door and try to make it harder for someone to get access. That may be all that they need to do, but at least it's giving teachers some ideas and training to think about that. Because you do, there's three reactions, right? You flee, you freeze, or fight. I think those are the three basic reactions. We want our teachers to try to make the best decision to keep their kids safe and themselves safe.
And truth be told, you don't know what you, you don't know what you would do under that kind of stressful situation. You hope that you would make, it's like if you go to first aid of somebody that's having a heart attack, you know how to do CPR, you could do it in your sleep, but at that moment, can I really do this? And it's the same kind of situation. It's a little scary.
You're right. It's tough to ask our staff. You know, this is a heavy responsibility, but I think we owe it to our kids and our staff to be sure we take those steps. So this is something we're working on.
And Tony, I can appreciate that this training is not centered around SLOs or the officers there, because one thing they don't take into account, I can guarantee you, there's going to be, excuse me, there's going to be SLOs that's going to freeze when the time comes, or they're going to be cowardly like the Florida people. And I don't think they take that in consideration, but I've seen it happen. It's going to happen with some SLOs who's never been through. So I'm glad it's not based on what they can do, but, you know.
Yeah, and all these little tidbits I've learned, like for instance, today, the Dennis Middle School shooting not too long ago, there were 26 police cars that responded. He said, just like that, and our parking lot was full. But he says, I didn't think about the other schools in relation to this being kind of a diversion. I should have, in hindsight, had some of the police officers go to the other schools. And you learn things through, you know, issues like this. And, you know, nowadays, and when I go to safety conferences, I learn one or two tidbits per se that could help our corporation. And this Alice training in relation to my certification is good for two years, but then in the two years, I have to be recertified and I can teach in the school corporation I'm in. So for the next two years, I can't necessarily go to the police station or a different school and teach them, I can only teach in my own school corporation.
Trent, in any of those talks, did anybody speak up about the kids' reactions during an active shooting situation?
Well, in not so many words, but they kind of precedent it by saying, these type of practices are just like any other drill now, just like a fire drill.
I disagree.
Just like a tornado drill.
I've got a couple of kids that go to our high school and there was a lockdown not too long ago at our high school for, I forget what the situation was, something out of the country and we...
Locked down our buildings.
Yeah. I got two girls that have bad anxiety and believe me, it wasn't like every other drill. One of them didn't go to school the next day, she was just too terrified. The other one has panic attacks, she was on the phone with her mother in the classroom and the teacher, of course, pulled her phone away, but she was terrified. I don't believe that a tornado drill, a fire drill, gives the same reaction. I'm not saying we're involving our kids in doing this, but I am guessing there will come a point in time that we're going to have to look at at least something related to that or what, we'll just simulate a lockdown. I think our kids are going to react. I've had parents tell me their little ones come home from school scared that there's going to be a shooter in their school. So I don't think it's the same reaction and I hope that they do do some sort of training. For teachers, you know, I can't imagine a special ed class and how those kids might react if the teacher's trying to put things in front of the door or whatever, you know? Or you have a classroom of 20 kindergarteners and somebody screaming, you know, and they're terrified and wetting their pants. I mean, I'm not trying to make, you know, I don't know. I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think at the elementary ages, it's more in your lesson plans, reading a book, you know, those types of situations. It's not actually, you know, confronting a threat or, you know, if a guy with a gun comes in and starts shooting at you, you don't give them real life scenarios. It's all about educating at the young age and kind of building on that through the middle school and the high school. By the time we get to middle school and high school, I think cognitively, they have a better understanding of what may happen or may not happen. And you're always going to have, you know, your kids at the elementary age, middle school and high school that are affected by a violent act in the building. And the potential for that. And in addition to that, you have kids with IEPs and things like that, which is a different parameter and a different set of modes and means you have to go by to kind of, you know, help those kids out too, so.
Thank you for what you're doing. I mean, that's a lot of work for you both to be undertaking and it's a tremendous responsibility to be in charge of this.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And Tony, tell law enforcement that your teachers will not be shot with rubber bullets here.
They will not.
They will not.
Actually, although when I went through the training, we were shot with cushy balls, but we're not going to do that here.
I told Carol and Joey both that, and that came out in the news, and they both said, I can't imagine because of that. And I appreciate our law enforcement, they have been a part of the trainings, they know the floor plan of our building. The city police are doing more trainings this summer, just so they're familiar with their building. Janey got them set up with key fobs so they can access our doors during the school hours. So we're trying to be as proactive as we can, with the hopes that we never have to use any of this training, so.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Happy to interview you.
Well, and we still have to go on. We'll talk about curriculum revision and course additions.
Hopefully mine won't be quite as intense. In your package, you have information from the Curriculum Planning Committee. Obviously, it's for your review and then we'll bring it back for approval next month. First of all, the Curriculum Planning Committee would like to recommend the Holton Mifflin Hardcore Reading Series for students grades K through six. These materials can be available for you to view. If you'd like to view them, you can get with me or Trish Fields and we have them on display. Also, the Curriculum Planning Committee is recommending that we add three courses to CHS. First one, kind of in line with the eSports club that we had this morning, Introduction to Computer Science and Computer Science 4801. These are designed to support Senate Act 172, in which we are required to teach computer science in grades five through 12. So the high school is giving you some brief descriptions of both of these courses and the skills that will be taught in these courses. And then the third course is Analytical Algebra II, which is another state initiative to help support students who are struggling in algebra to maintain that Core 40 diploma. This isn't going to be for all kids, but kids who struggle with the traditional Algebra II, they could take this Analytical Algebra II. And that course description has also been provided on the back. So next month, we'll be asking for your approval for these adoption of the Holton Mifflin program for elementary and then the three courses at the high school. If you would like to see more information about these three courses or our curriculum, it can also be accessed online on the Atlas program and we can give you information on how to view that as well. Any initial questions about any of these?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Now's the time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Seeing none, we will move on to report items. Superintendent Discussion Group's reports, Principal Director's reports, Director of Human Resources report.
I don't have anything more.
Director of Finance report.
Just a couple things at your place this evening. The Mobile Kids Cafe will be rolling again this summer, every day except before the July, they'll be serving meals. This includes the sites in them and the menus for those days. So encourage 18 and younger to come have a meal in the summer.
Is that all summer thing?
It is, except July 4th, yeah. Secondly, I've got a memo related to the 2020 budget and on that is the tentative budget calendar. So if you have any questions or wish to have site visits related to capital projects, shoot me an email or give me a call. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And any Assistant Superintendent report?
I just want to recognize Megan Gilman and Kelly Flum McCollum for hosting the Special Olympics. This was the first year for Fayette County to host and both of these gals, along with other people behind the scenes, did an awesome job at putting together the Special Olympics. We had a great day. We worried about the rain, but it ended up being a beautiful day, was very organized, and it took a lot of time and effort and I just want to make sure they're recognized for that. I know some of you had the opportunity to protest, so we appreciate that as well.
Superintendent's report.
I echo that. It was a great day for our athletes and I think also our, the students who get to work with the kids every day, too, the impact that it has with those peer tutors. So those kids had as great of a time as the athletes. It was great. We all had a great time, beautiful day. I just want to thank Trent for your work with Arsenal Safety. That's very important more than his leadership. So I want to echo that. And again, congratulations to Brian and Julie. You picked one of the longest meetings to come and center. I apologize, but, well, and welcome, Todd, to, as a Spartan, it's going to be good to see you in red and white, so.
Okay. For the good of the cause, do we have anything tonight?
I'd like to congratulate the band. All of the bands last night were fabulous. The amount of improvement from their Christmas concert to last night was exponential in some cases and I think everybody had a great time. All of the music people involved, the county school corporation, but particularly Mr. Thompson, Mr. Dolphy, it was a wonderful concert and I did not know that they were going to the Disney Parade this year. The Connersville High School band is planning on doing that. And that's just a terrific event for them and lots of hard work and some really, really good music at the Bowl West. Congratulations to Mr. Dolphy and Mr. Thompson.
Anything else? With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chris Mann. Thank you, Mark. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Post same sign, meeting's adjourned.